It's called a meeting to order if everyone please rise.
Let's turn on the mics. First order of business, Commissioner Evans, do we have some opening comments?
Funny you should ask, I have a couple. Glad you could all join us this evening. As always, our meetings are neutral ground, a place to hear and be heard. Welcome. Your questions or statements regarding an agenda item will be entertained under citizens to be heard at the top. All other matters will be recognized at the end of the meeting during public comment. It's that time of year again where our volunteer emergency services, Thorndale Fire Company and Minco's Ambulance, send out their fundraising deals. I plan to give personal generously. They count on us so that we can count on them to be there in our most urgent time of need. We received new county funding to complete the zoning update project. And in February, we'll begin working with Nancy Sorsanella to get us over the finish line. The Lincoln Highway Committee is poised to reorganize earlier this year, and getting that hard fought LERTA program off of the launch pad is on the top of our list. Mr. Huggins over here took over as Director of Public Works only a few weeks ago, and was already hit with flooding from a major storm and the first significant snowfall in years. He met that moment big time. Thank you. I visited Ingleside Golf Course a couple of weeks back, and I gotta say Nicole has got that place transforming. Oh my God. The new carts look fantastic, and the greens were actually green in winter. It's gonna be a good year for them. 2023 was quite a year, and we're already off to a strong start for 2024. We have new relationships with the new manager, and we're hoping that in this year we'll attract more grant money due to the strong relationships we have with our friends in Harrisburg, State Senator Katie Muth, House Reps Danielle Frillotten, and Dan Williams. They truly do believe in Callan, and I know you do too. Lastly, Parks and Rec Commission need your help to keep the fun rolling here in Callan. Right now, five, you say five, people are basically responsible for making all of our events happen. Please consider coming to their next meeting on Monday, February 5th at 7:00 PM. And remember, when we all work together, there's nothing we can't do. Spread kindness, everyone. Anger, grudges, and resentment are not worth our time or energy. Compassion, empathy, peace, and love, these are what make the world go round.
Thank you, Commissioner Evans.
Thank you.
And next on our agenda, citizens to be heard. Do we have any citizens here in the Township Building? Hands raised, any in Zoom world? Ms. Mark. Welcome.
Hey, good evening again, Mark Fox, 256 Thornridge. I think this is relevant because it, I think it's an agenda item, but I know we just had that last meeting. And I think what's being proposed, I don't think anybody in Callan would say it's any, I would think everybody would say it's better than what's currently there. But I would like to, to add on to what Mr. DiSario had said about traffic. You know, I was thinking about this, and I didn't want to chime in as the call was ending. But you know, that, that part of the development that's off of Park Ave or Park Drive, those people coming home from work or even going to work are more than likely going to be coming off the bypass. So, you know, they're gonna be coming down 340, and so they're gonna be making a left onto Meadow or one of those, one of those streets on the left side there. And so they're gonna be stopping all that traffic behind them to wait for a break to, to make that left turn and/or follow it down to Geo Carlson and make the left on Geo Carlson, which is a, you know, there's a traffic light there, but it's a very short light. You know, that's an extra 200 cars, even if it's 150 cars a day. That, that's a lot of cars, so I would, I would hope that, that before PennDOT rubber stamps the traffic study, that they look at, you know, the impact that that's gonna have on 340, as well as the people on Park Ave who are now gonna have a lot more cars driving past their house.
Very good point. Thank you, Mark. Abby, do we have anyone else? Move on, Township Solicitor, Ms. Camp, what do we have?
So the first thing is for you to consider, to consider adopting the ordinance that we just had a hearing on, public hearing. So at 6:00 PM, the board had a public hearing to consider a petition to amend the zoning ordinance that was submitted by the Cohen family. They own property at 4109 Lincoln Highway. The property is currently split zoned from TB1 where it's abuts Lincoln Highway, and in the rear portion is zoned R4. The board held a public hearing to consider changing the R4 portion of the property to be TB1, and they also considered certain amendments to the townhome or multifamily development standards for properties within the TB1 district. So the board, if we close the hearing, you heard the evidence presented by Mr. Khan on behalf of the applicant, Mr. Nagel as their counsel, comments from the audience, as well as people in the Zoom world. So if the board wanted to make a motion to adopt the ordinance, they could do so at this time.
Commissioners, any further questions? I know during our discussion, they were able to answer all of our questions. Any concerns at this point? Point, no concerns have been brought up?
I really wanna see it happen. I just would have liked to have gotten a, if we knew more about who was going to do the actual development, would really make me jump out of my chair.
Mark, though, I think we do, you know, the zoning hearing sets up, the zoning sets up what can be done there. But I think we, we do have a guard rally in that we have conditional use. Yes. That, you know, we, we still have another layer to make sure that it looks and operates, you know. So I, I think there is a guard rail that, that they're there with the set of conditional use.
Ms. Camp, is that correct?
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, perfect. Well, I think they did a fine job answering our questions, a very good presentation in anything besides a used car lot like that, auto parts.
Oh, yeah.
We'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
So moved. Move by Commissioner Evans, second by Commissioner Young, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. She's good, 5-0.
Well, let Mr. Nagel and Mr. Khan know. The next matter under my agenda is to consider a motion to approve the preliminary slash final land development application for Farmhouse Enterprises LLC. The property is parcel 39-4-138.1. I did circulate a motion, proposed motion to the board last week and was updating it and revising it based on additional information that was being submitted. So let me just go through some of the background. So the applicant filed an application on behalf of the owner of the property, which is DPP 2022 Properties LLC. That is a Pennsylvania limited liability company owned by Dana, and I'm gonna probably say the name wrong, Patrizio? Yes, okay, and her husband, who are here today, looks like their two sons. The property is a 2.095 acre property on the south side of West Lincoln Highway. It's east of the intersection with Bondsville Road and Lincoln Highway. They proposed to develop a one-story, 5,445 square foot building, 38 off-street parking spaces, portion of a sidewalk, stormwater management facilities, and other site improvements to be used as a restaurant with drive-through called the Farmhouse Coffee and Espresso Bar. The property is in the TB1 district, also the Lincoln Highway overly district zone 1. The board approved a conditional use in a decision of May 25, 2023, to allow the building to be used for a drive-through. Applicants submitted preliminary land development plans prepared by Bastardis Consulting Engineers. Those plans were filed sometime in June, and the last revision is December 7th, 2023. The typical township consultants review the plans, so you have your civil engineer, Arrow. You have your traffic engineer, Panoni. This property will be required to connect to public sewer, so you have the County Township Municipal Authority Engineer Gilmore and Associates review. I proposed a draft motion that would approve the preliminary slash final plans, subject to certain conditions. The first one is that the development must comply with all relevant terms of the zoning ordinance, subdivision land development ordinance, and stormwater ordinance. There are specific waivers that the applicant has requested, and those are outlined in paragraph 3 of the motion. One is that the board can consider this as a preliminary final plan. Two is, that's SADO. There are three stormwater management waivers. One is to allow the infiltration BMP to be within 10 feet from the right-of-way, where the ordinance would require 15. The second one is to allow stormwater pipes to be smaller than 18 inches in diameter and with a slope less than 1%. And the third is to allow outfall stormwater pipe to have a slope greater than 7%. The engineer reviewed those requests and did not voice any objections to any of those waivers. The applicant must comply with all terms in the conditional use decision. Part of that, one of the orders or one of the conditions in the conditional use order required a portion of the property to have sidewalk, and that the order read that that would be with brick inlay. So I know that the planning commission meeting, which was held on Monday, this was a discussion, the applicant would like to propose stamped concrete in lieu of, and I guess it would look like brick, I'm assuming. So that is how I wrote the, the order, is that in order to comply with that specific condition, they would be using stamped concrete in that sidewalk area. The board also was asked to grant, because it's in the Lincoln Highway overlay, the board has flexibility to waive otherwise applicable requirements. So one of the, one of the requirements that they're asking you to modify, normally that there would have to be a 10-foot wide landscaping buffer on the property boundaries. They would like to pull that buffer in closer to the building because they're not using the far eastern side of the property. So they're still having a landscape buffer, it's just where the location of it is, it's closer to the actual building. The other ones are complying with any of the outstanding review letters. That would include the Panoni letter, the Arrow letter, and the Gilmore letter. They have to obtain public sewer, so whatever planning module, excuse me, planning module approval from the DEP, and then enter the typical agreements that an applicant has to enter with the CTMA in terms of reserving sewer capacity, paying for the appropriate tapping fees, and designing the sewer system the way the CTM rules and regulations require. This is the one thing that I'm not clear on whether they're, I think they're not trying to get a highway occupancy permit or do not believe that you need the highway occupancy permit. And so the way the condition is read is applicant, if needed, will obtain the HOP. And as part of that permit, if, if they have to go to PennDOT, PennDOT will determine if there's additional right-of-way being proposed to widen the, the right-of-way along Lincoln Highway. If PennDOT doesn't want that added right-of-way, which typically they don't, then they're making that as a perpetual offer to the township for that additional right-of-way. The sidewalk is going to be located along the frontage of the property, and we have asked that that be one of the conditions that they grant an easement to the township to allow public use of that sidewalk, so that's another condition. The, they're asking for a, well, it's not a waiver, but to do a fee in lieu of open space. So that fee is in the amount of $4,655.48. And then the standard conditions are executing the land development agreement, financial security agreement, post-financial security, sign the stormwater management agreement, pay all the township consultant reimbursement fees that are owed, and the rest are just your, your typical boilerplate conditions. The one thing that I did not include that I would like to is that the section of the ordinance requires, allows in the Lincoln Highway overly district, instead of a streetlight, they do allow the lights to be on the building itself, and that is what the applicant has proposed. So if the board is comfortable with that, I would add that as one of the modifications that's approved through this order. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Pat McKenna's here on behalf of the applicant. If the board has any questions specifically on the plan, and I believe Lowell is, is available if necessary.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Patrick McKenna, I'm here on behalf of the applicant. You last saw me, we were here, not quite a year ago. Obviously, your solicitor has read the proposed motion for your consideration. We did get a favorable recommendation from the planning commission. Been through, I think, two iterations of the plan. We were all, will comply with the modifications that your solicitor read to you the last time that we had your engineers review the letter. So I'm happy to answer any specific questions that you may have. The plan has not changed significantly, really, since we were here for conditional use. It's really minor technical requirements relative to the subdivision and land development ordinance and storm. So if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Or if there's something that'd like me specifically to address, that's not already been addressed by your solicitor.
Commissioners?
Yeah, Pat, just wanted to clarify something because at the planning commission, when the idea was proposed to do stamped concrete, I didn't recall it being specifically just looking like brick. I thought it was just some sort of design.
Yeah, I, I think that was the intention is to leave it open for, to be decided during the construction. I, I don't know, that's what we put in our, in our review letter. Stamped concrete, sometimes the design can look like a brick. So, yeah, but I think that is, that is correct.
Yeah.
Is that what you, you would like it to?
I'm fine with, I'm fine to leave it open for now, for what would be determined at a later date. I miss that part. The stamped concrete, when they spoke to planning commission, they asked to do stamped concrete with some sort of nice design. They weren't asking for brick.
To resemble brick.
Right.
For sidewalks.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do we, do we have a, a sample of that?
No, not yet. I think that was the commissioner's point is,
Okay.
That was sort of a compromise or offer that we were trying to figure out. It has not yet been, we haven't gotten down to that level, frankly, to, to offer that. In fact, I don't think my client has seen quite exactly what that would look like.
I mean, we could write the motion that they would have to come back to get board approval of, of the design.
Is there a reason why we're trying to get away from the brick? And the only reason why I ask this is just because of the, the Lincoln Highway Committee. I know they've been adamant about trying to make sure, in fact, the last several developers coming through, making sure we have some kind of brick there just to symbolize your encounter. And I know this is just a small little section, so I, I didn't want to, I don't want to seem like we're paying, playing favorites, forcing one developer to come in and do all this, you know, brick, and then say, okay, no, we're, you know, we're fine with stamped, stamped-looking cement. So I, I'm just trying to keep an even playing field.
Sure, and I'm happy to have my clients speak to you directly. I think the two main points that you've probably heard before, the cost, the additional cost involved with installation, and there's also the maintenance, additional costs for maintenance moving forward. Those are probably the two. You don't have hardly any sidewalk in the area, so I think any sidewalk is, is an improvement secondarily. So you wanna?
Just, just before.
And I know it's, it's been discussed, I know you had it with other projects, so I'm not harrowing that. I would just point out, it's not an ordinance requirement. I know it's something that the township has, has sought, so I just point that out for context. But I think it's probably more important to hear from, from the actual business owner.
Welcome, Dana.
So I just, with the brick, I think the number one thing is the cost. Cement sidewalk is about $7 per square feet. When you start to put brick inlays, it can bring us up to about 20. So as a small business owner, I know I've said this a lot, we really have to look at every, every dollar. And honestly, to put brick in a sidewalk, to me, just, I'd rather buy my ovens or put tables and chairs in my, I still have to build a building and dig a hole and put sewer. And the expense of putting brick inlays and sidewalk, just, it, the cost of it is, is immense. The second thing is the maintenance. You walk, drive by the campus today, you can still see there are cones there from the snowstorm. Because they're not totally, you know, level. It's a liability issue. People can trip on them. I like to tell this, this story about the bricks that are in the borough of Downingtown right now. You basically have the curb, and then 10 years ago, the planning commission, and I think it was Main Street got a grant for a beautification project, and they decided to put brick inlays along all of the sidewalks. So basically, it's visually, if you get, you know, it's the curb, a brick inlay that's probably three feet wide, and then cement sidewalks. It looked great when they put them down, but fast forward 10 years later, we're all pointing fingers at each other on who's gonna fix them because the trees have uprooted them. They've been, you know, through salt and storms. We have sinking water meters, right, sinking water meters that are, you know, that we have holes in them now. And then Pico came in, I guess, starting a year or two ago and started to take out the, the pre-co, the, the poles for the power lines, and we now have bricks, piles of bricks all over the place. As a small business owner, just taking over the liability of somebody tripping when those things move, because they are gonna move. You know, that's just not something that Pete and I feel really good about. And I'm not sure, I could be the first that have brought these points to you guys. I'm good with that. I hope that, you know, you take that in, you listen, and I'll probably bring a lot of, a lot more points to you guys too as we go through the process. But we appreciate, you know, you guys listening. And, you know, a concession that you would make on that would be great. We promise that the sidewalk will look beautiful and fresh, and we'll have some kind of design if you want that is classic. But the brick, again, just, we feel like there's a lot of issues that can involve.
Well, I was, the other day I was thinking about it because, you know, I, we try to be insistent so that we're not making one person do what we didn't make somebody else do. And I was thinking about it, and when Lomax came in, in order to get the sidewalk along the, the frontage there, we kind of dropped the brick requirement in order to get the sidewalk. So, you know, that's a recent project that we, we didn't have any brick features in, in order to get the sidewalk because of the expense of the sidewalk. So we've done it both ways, I guess, you know, we, we haven't been consistent completely. But if you could do something that's stamped, that maybe just a section looks like, like brick, or, you know, something like that, just, just so that we see something familiar. And I guess, you know, I've been the one that has harked on the, the brick the entire time. I made Wawa redesign their entire look of their building. But we're trying to, to, to do a vision of what Lincoln Highway would look like. And, you know, one of the biggest things that people say about Callan is they don't know where Coatsville ends and Callan begins, or where Callan ends and Downingtown begins. But if we have a central look, you know, then people start to feel like, like they're, it's the Thorndale Village District. So that's what we're, we're looking for. But if it's the, the choice between an empty lot and brick, I'm gonna choose to have the lot filled. So, you know, anything you can do to make it look like brick or brick inlay with stamped concrete. And I, I don't know, they do so many things now. You can color the concrete, you know, and then just stamp the, the brick, a brick-looking inlay into that, that would be great.
Yeah, yeah, we would, we would consider it.
I have to take a bullet on this. I was one of the people who pushed really hard for brick until, how many months ago was it that I did the walk with Kenneth Johnson? Ken does the Harriet Tubman walk, and he's an amazing guy. I think Pete, you met him?
I saw you fall down.
Yeah, pretty much. We were walking through the campus. I was with, at that point, with Chris Park and Mr. Johnson. And the bricks were all like up and ripped out, and I was thinking, do we really wanna keep going in this direction? Is there something better we can do?
Well, you bring up some very valid points. The fact that this Lincoln Highway Committee has been pushing for the last, what, 10, 15 years behind Josh here for brick, and for him to step down about it, I'm, I'm pretty impressed. I, unfortunately, I know Jamie's gonna be very upset with us if, if we went a different direction. I know Toyota dealership spent a lot of money on their brick. I, I think if we're gonna do any changes, it needs to go forward and not require it. And I guess during our zoning change, we're, we're not gonna mandate it.
And I, I also, I also think, you know, if they, if they're able to do the inlay, that, that we, we need to be a little bit flexible. Also, especially, you know, a small business doesn't have the deep pockets that Wawa has, or, you know, they, they can't put a Thorndale sign up like Wawa did. So I think we need to be a little more flexible, and I'm willing to be flexible to have a business on Lincoln Highway rather than nothing there.
Well, absolutely.
So, you know, I, I'm willing to bend a little bit for, for a small business that, that, you know, the costs are just what they are these days.
Thank you.
Is there, is there anything else along that sidewalk that we could do to just state you're in Callan? That was the whole issue with Jamie, you know, with the, the Sports Center.
Yeah.
Just, just so when you're walking down that sidewalk, you know you're in Callan Township. That, that was, that was our idea back then.
I have to, I have to be honest, as a small business owner with a really distinct brand, I love that we are gonna be bringing something that looks totally different than anything else that you see when you drive through Callan. And I don't doubt that when they see our building and they see what, what Dan's gonna do next door, and we're on the same, same team with this stuff too. I mean, we're, we're buds, we're neighbors. We're gonna share the sidewalk, our customers are gonna share that sidewalk and probably walk back and forth. But I think that what we're gonna do in that little corridor is gonna be so unique, but I don't think that there's any doubt that people are gonna know who they are.
And I think to the point of flexibility, but again, I was flexible with Lomax because the sidewalk was so important to get people safely to and from places. So, you know, I was flexible there because there, there's not much brick on that property either. It's, it's a red color, but there's no brick inlay in the sidewalk there.
Well, Jamie's property doesn't have brick on the building itself.
No, no.
He did put up the benches, he put up the pillars. Definitely, I think he did a little too much, actually. I, I didn't expect all of that brick.
And, and I think, should you come back to develop maybe the other side, then we have this discussion again. You know, because at, at that point, we would, we may have more things on either side that have that same look too. So, you know, should you come back to develop the other portion of the property, you know, we can talk about that too.
But in talking about that, to keep it consistent, it would just be the same sidewalk. There, there would be no brick inlay on the east side. If, you know, if in fact down the road, they're gonna install a sidewalk for the other side of the property. So I would, I would keep it consistent. But my question is, I guess this is Jeffers? Okay. You know, at some point, you're gonna need the sidewalk as well. It sounds like we wouldn't require the brick inlay. Yeah, yeah, no, not. I, I would.
Yes, something.
I, I would agree with that. My concern, just looking at the future, at some point or somewhere along that road, we're gonna need streetlights. So are they all gonna be on your property? Because I, I know you're.
We do have one, I don't want to suggest.
Oh, we do? Okay.
As far as why we were asking, not only to do the, the building light, but. Microphone, it's on the east side, side that we're not actually building.
Okay.
So. In this area, there's an overhead streetlight.
Yes, okay.
Are you guys gonna have? Are you gonna have a sign out front at all, or how did, do you have something planned for that?
Honestly, this, this has, this portion of the planning here has been so much that I quite honestly haven't, haven't fully thought about a sign yet. But I would love to do what we have, we don't have a big sign right now at Farmhouse because of where we are in the borough. But we have, you know, vinyls in the windows because we're on, we're on the street. And we have a great. And we have a great sign that's kinda catty corner that says coffee. It's pretty awesome looking and bakery underneath. So I would love to do that sign, um, and our logo. Because we are set back with this building, we do need something that will be closer to the street.
Right.
Um, we can't just go with stuff on the building. So yeah, there, there will have to be some kind of, we will, we will obviously need signage.
Yes.
Somewhere. And I guess kind of where we have that temporary sign now, the coming soon sign could be a great area to put it because it doesn't take away from, we need every parking space. We need, you know, everything that's on that lot, we, we need, we can't sacrifice, but maybe, you know, somewhere in the grass if we can, it's kinda where I wouldn't sign going.
Yeah, yeah. No neon, but.
Oh, no.
No neon, but the, uh.
Little Vegas look. Yeah, a little Vegas look would be perfect.
Yeah. I would, I would also say this. I would love to be a part of the conversation of what are other things that we can do. And outside of these meetings, but I would love to get together if there's, you know, with whoever needs to be in the room.
Well, you're in luck because we're starting our Lincoln Highway Committee again, so.
Well, and you, you need to have, you need to have small business representation.
Yes, we will definitely reach out to you.
Conversation to help you guys figure out what is important. You want more small businesses, what is important to small business owners?
Yeah.
Where do we wanna put our money? Um, you know, and what could be the things that we kind of bring to cable differently to make Callan more distinct? We are gonna have two locations once this is up. We're gonna have a Downingtown Borough location and a Callan location. Two totally different areas of Downingtown. It's gonna be, it will be the same Farmhouse, but in, you know, in a different place and I'm happy to be a part of the conversation.
Thank you. Thank you. And hopefully you'll get some new customers if the Cohen project moves forward.
Yeah.
Probably get like another three hundred.
That's huge.
Customers coming in. So, yeah, that's good.
No, that's huge. Hopefully they all like coffee.
I think they will. They'll smell it brewing right out of the window.
Exactly, exactly. So thank you.
Don't, those, I gotta say it again. It was only once, it was when it was snowing the first time. Lisa and I came in there and I saw Italian cherry coffee cake. I think that's what it was. Oh my God. Never mind.
We know where to find Mark when he's finding.
Well, thank you.
All right.
Kristen, what did the planning commission say?
They recommended approval.
Yeah.
Um, compliance with any outstanding comments in the review letters. And they were fine with no brick, although recognize that the conditional use order requires some sort of brick inlay. That's why I think it's important in this order to have the stamped concrete. We can't really modify the conditional use through land development, so.
It's important to. Sort of a substitute for, to have that feature somehow.
And, and let me ask you this about the stamped concrete. Is it painted? Is it a painted surface so it looks like brick?
No.
So, so this is, well, this is kinda, it's kinda, kinda bright because we're offering this, but I don't have, I haven't shopped this yet. Like I don't have like, you know, I don't have samples, anything like that. This just came off this week. Um, but again, before, obviously it's gonna be a while before the sidewalk goes down, I think. So, um, so I'd be happy to share whatever I, you know, come up with.
I mean, if the board wants to be involved in that approval process, we should write that into the condition. I don't know how much, I don't know how much you wanna be involved in that.
And the reason why I'm asking is because we may not like it.
I, I, yeah, and honestly, I don't, when we say like staining and dying and painting concrete.
It's gonna wear.
I don't just wanna say yes just to appease you guys. Like I'm, that's also a maintenance issue too. So the last thing I wanna do is something to get this done and then turn around and five years we're like, uh, you know, the cement needs to be repainted and the book's terrible. I, I honestly would prefer to stick with fresh concrete. If we have to stamp it with something, whether it's film look or a brick look or, or whatever, I know it's gonna save us on budget. Um, but I don't want it to look like we just.
The problem is that you have a conditional use order with a condition that says you have to use brick inlay. So this, this forum of granting land development approval does not, they don't have the legal authority to just modify a condition in a conditional use order. There's a process for that. It's a public hearing process. Yes, it takes time and money, but I think you'll, I think you'll get the result you want and then the brick goes away. Otherwise, we need some brick somewhere to sort of satisfy that condition. It's not, it's not perfect. I'm still not loving that, but it's better than not having any brick whatsoever and just ignoring the fact that there is a condition that you accepted. And I'm not trying to be difficult. I'm just, that's where we are legally.
So is stamping brick enough?
I think it is. That's, that, the intent was that it, you have the, the look of the brick. So the stamped concrete with the look of the brick. So, I mean, you don't, yeah, and again, I, again, I don't wanna have everybody locked into something that, that they don't right now know what it looks like and, and maintenance issues. But, and it doesn't have to be that you get the modification now. You could in the future, you could go on with your planning and come back. It, it, the board would, you know, waive the fee for the hearing and I don't know.
Without running snow blowers across the shelves. We don't want that either.
Right, right.
So I.
I think Miss Camp's offer is probably.
Just up to the mic, just so.
Sorry, so that we would bring the design back before.
Yeah, I, I think that's, just so that we don't run afoul of the conditional use.
Agreed.
And then, uh, the other thing is you, if we do the, if you wanna remove it, we have to go through this whole process again, which is time, time consuming, so.
I'd rather avoid.
I'm thinking. Yeah, I'm thinking if you have like the, the section of sidewalk and if you look at Jamie's, there's like probably, it's probably like six bricks by six bricks, you know, um.
It's like four by four.
Yeah, where you could just stamp the center of the, the thing with, uh, with brick somehow and whether that's colored or I, I don't, I don't know. But you can figure something out that, you know, you can just stamp it and then it, it gets the same look as what Jamie has, but doesn't probably have the maintenance cost of, or the freezing thawing where the brick starts popping up, you know? So, yeah, I think.
I mean, you could even say just shall install a sidewalk using stamped concrete or another material approved by the board with some brick element somewhere. Does that make sense? I mean, if, if it's not in the sidewalk, it's in a pedestal of some sort, it's in, Mark was saying something about a bench area. I mean, I, I don't know.
The, the only thing I would ask is, I mean, it does have to be clear because if not, the onus comes back on me.
Right.
You're wearing one less hat now.
Yeah, you don't look so stressed, Ray.
Yeah.
Hey, Kristen, uh, Camp, other, other question. So let, let's say they do wanna do a sign. If the sign has brick pillars holding up the sign, does that, does that, um, satisfy that condition, do you think?
I'm being flexible, Josh, to be honest with you. I mean, it says in the conditional use order, sidewalk with brick inlay.
Okay.
So the best course of action is to seek a modification and get that condition out of there. And, and they would because they, the, the law is if there's changed circumstances, the changed circumstances is the board has been educated and seen in action what brick sidewalks do. So it's an easy, it's an easy enough process to just ask for that modification and then we don't even have to talk about it. It's out of the order.
Right.
Why, why don't we, why don't we move ahead? If you need to modify the, the condition, we can do that.
That's exactly what I was about to suggest.
Okay, so how are we wording this then? That the way it is, that, that in lieu of the brick inlay, they shall install a stamped concrete that has some brick feature? Does that work? That makes sense?
So, just a procedural question. If they go back and get modification from the conditional use, do they then have to modify the land development?
At the same time.
Okay.
There's not the public hearing process that's needed for that.
Okay. So if we need to modify it, we can modify it all in one foul swoop. So I, I say we move ahead so that you get your plan approved and you can begin doing what you need to do. But I think maybe Kristen's point's a good one. Just put in what Kristen said, we need to modify it, we can modify it. If we, we don't and the stamp looks good or you think it's a, you know, something that'll work, then you can just move forward with that and, and not have to.
And maybe not even have to come back.
Right.
And you want, you want her to come back to you to get the design approved, correct? Okay, so it would be in lieu of the brick inlay, applicant shall install stamped concrete with some brick feature, the design to be approved by the board. All right. Any other questions on the proposed motion? Any other issues? And I will also add to the one that I circulated, um, the modification to allow the lighting on the building, which is allowed in the Lincoln Highway overlay.
Yes, I have no other question.
You guys, I'm good.
Ladies?
Fine.
We're good.
Everybody's make motion.
Okay. Uh, can I, can I ask the residents if they have any questions since they're gonna be buying coffee here?
Okay.
And eating these delicious donuts and, and pastries?
Do you also have a workout gym included in it?
Well, my, my wife sends me through that drive-through to get those donuts too.
No.
Does.
I'll have to come one night when we're not on the agenda.
Yes, yeah.
After approval.
All right, I, I don't see any hands raised here in Township. Any in Zoom? No? I see Mark Fox or, yes? Okay. Yes, Mark.
Uh, thank you to the farmhouse for choosing Callan Township to expand your business. Uh, we appreciate that. But, you know, as a resident who, who utilizes, who walks to like the Midas, who Mr. Tire or to Jeffers, I would personally rather see, if you're gonna go with the stamped concrete, fine, but I don't think a brick sidewalk is a long-term solution to the point that the, uh, the woman from Forum House brought up because the bricks are gonna become uneven, they'll break, somebody's gonna trip. I'd be happy, as a pedestrian, I would be happy with just a well-maintained sidewalk that offers safety as opposed to something that has four bricks in the middle of it, that car's zooming by at forty miles an hour, will never see anybody. So to me, as long as the sidewalk is safe and, you know, maintained, um, and provides, like I said, safety for the pedestrians, that's all I think we should be really worried about.
Point well taken. Thank you, Mark. No other, uh, comments? All right, board, uh, we'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
And all this excitement over here, by Commissioner Evans, second by Commissioner Young. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion's good, five zero. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristen.
Thanks very much.
Thanks, Pat.
Thank you.
All right.
I gotta say, look, this is a real family this.
Yes.
That's it.
Yeah.
Even bring the kids out.
Put everybody to work.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
All work.
Bye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, Kristen. Good night, Dan.
See other business. Thank you.
Good night.
All right, next on the agenda, Township Manager. Good evening.
Good evening. Have, uh, three items on the agenda this evening to discuss. The first is the Cable Franchise Agreement, uh, Cohen Law Group. And this was discussed at, uh, at the January eleventh meeting. Uh, Solicitor had the opportunity to review the agreement. Um, the number listed here not to exceed nine thousand nine hundred seventy-five. Uh, we received word, uh, the, in the agreement, the amount listed is based, is there's a percentage discount provided based on the number of municipalities that sign up. Um, as of today, it appears that we will receive the fifteen percent discount, uh, bringing that total down to eight thousand nine twenty-five. Donna's part, I, just a question that popped in. I know that they also do audits. Is that included in?
Yes, this would be a lengthy process, I think about two years where they'll take a review with, uh, do an audit, perform an audit first and then engage in negotiations up half of the township for the, the new contract.
That's what I thought. It's just, it's very wordy, uh, document, so.
That commissioners, any questions? Any other question?
It's a good deal.
They're giving a lot.
But what was the, uh, the amount, the new amount, eight thousands?
Eight thousand nine hundred twenty-five. If all the municipalities that have indicated they're gonna sign up to sign.
Okay.
Officially sign the document.
Great, and this is a two-year.
Treaty agreement?
Uh, no, it'll be two years until it's complete. Correct?
Something like that.
I think so, okay. All right, uh, no questions from commissioners. Uh, any questions here in the township building, residents? None at this time? Any in Zoom? Commissioners entertain a motion to authorize Township Manager to sign the agreement in the amount of eight thousand nine hundred twenty-five.
I'm with.
Move. Moved by Commissioner Kennedy, second by Commissioner Tindaro. All in favor, say aye.
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 It's good, five zero.
Thank you.
Storm sewer, that came up earlier.
Yes, and I wanna thank staff and the, uh, Consultant Gilmore Associates for allowing me to talk about this. Very exciting. I know a lot of work went into getting Township to the point where we're about to initiate this, this project. This, the storm sewer condition assessment is, it will be a comprehensive review of the stormwater management systems, uh, stormwater inlets, stormwater pipes throughout the township. Uh, very exciting project that will hopefully help the township identify any areas that need, uh, uh, long-term repair, short-term repair, replacement, maintenance and the like. That's scheduled to begin very shortly in the coming weeks. And, uh, and I believe Ross from Gilmore is on, uh, so please correct me if I'm wrong on anything, but, um, it, uh, should be completed within the next couple of months. At which point we'll have the opportunity to have data and make decisions based on actual conditions of this, this infrastructure. Improving the infrastructure that needs, it's in critical state. And then planning ahead, developing a capital plan that we can better budget, uh, better prepare and better, uh, address those conditions long-term. The goal, of course, is when, uh, when there's a critical failure, it's an expensive project to fix. We have the opportunity to stay on top of it. We're aware of the issues. We're keeping an eye on it and we're building towards ensuring that the system is functioning properly. It'll be improved service to the residents and, uh, at a significant cost savings to the township in the event of, uh, an unexpected failure. It's a, it's a very exciting project, one that will be implemented into a GIS system and with, uh, the risk associated with, uh, the conditions of individual stormwater inlets, pipes and the like.
Great update.
Is, is that something we budgeted for or is there a grant or something to do this assessment project?
So it's obviously heard before my time and Ross perhaps, or Lisa, would you care to address the, cause I know it's about, correct me if I'm wrong, but the figure in the assessment document was fairly expensive.
Some of the funds coming out of the Arlie?
Yeah, I, I can, no, the funds aren't coming out of the Arlie. For the, for the assessment project, we budgeted it, budgeted that money from our stormwater, from the, from the tax.
Okay.
From the tax. Um, once that assessment's done and it'll be what our hope is, it'll be prioritized just like the road program, which has been hugely successful for us. And then we'll be able to determine and budget what projects we can do, you know, on an annual basis from there.
I'm very excited about it.
It's gonna be good.
Cause this is, this is really important. Now, I know you've been working on this for a long.
Well, Dan's gonna be happy. Yes.
Storms are, are not gonna get easier. They're just gonna get worse.
True.
Get ahead of it.
Tony, you had a comment? Uh, come on up to the mic. Uh, I was, uh, requested to point the camera straight at Tony while he's speaking.
Yes.
I, I'm not kidding. They, they're, they're blowing up my phone. They, they wanna see Tony.
I just got a text too.
What's that? Say that again.
Didn't we do this, uh, stormwater? Didn't we have that, uh, another company in here doing the stormwaters, all the rains and everything? I see him taking safety.
Yeah.
I, I can't think the name of it.
Yeah, Cedarville.
Cedarville.
Oh, back then.
Yeah, so Cedarville Engineering did a, uh, a study for us at, at one point before. Uh, this project kinda picked up where they left off and went even deeper into that.
Uh, this project kinda picked up where they left off and went even deeper into that.
What, uh, what, is there a certain area of stormwater you're gonna do?
The, the entire township.
The entire township.
So Cedarville's charge was more, get it on the GIS so we know where it is. Like, we, we didn't at the time have a map that told us exactly where everything was. So Cedarville's mission was to get that stuff on the GIS map, and then we never got back to mm, like mapping the whole system, uh, and, uh, getting a plan together of how we replace that in the future. Um, so this, this would give us, just like we did with the roads, we, when we instituted the road program, we had done this, this type of study, and then that led to a capital plan that we said, we need this much money every year in order to keep up with, uh, the investments that we need to make. So this, this'll do the same thing. It'll show us what we have, show us what condition everything's in, and then we can make decisions based on that, rather than.
Study.
Right.
Because I know it was done. I knew, cause that girl was on the corner that day.
Yeah.
Thanks, Tony. Yes, Dan, come on up. Just name and address.
Danhagen two seventeen Park Drive. Uh, just out of curiosity, does this include like natural water? Is that what, is the stormwater? I know it's like for all the sewer and everything, does that also include like natural waterways and everything, like checking of any erosion to banks and everything to local creeks or cricks, as we say in Pennsylvania?
So, correct. Yeah, uh, from technical standpoint, discharge points would be identified on the GIS mapping system. Now, if it's discharging into a natural culvert, and Ross, please correct me if, uh, I'm speaking out of turn in any way, shape, or form, but this is primarily focusing on the township infrastructure and assessing the conditions of pipes, inlets, making sure it's functioning properly, and that there's no uh, potential critical failure that would impact the, the township.
Thank you, Dan.
I think it also would tell us, you know, um, if the system's working even as designed. So, you know, um, if, if the system's not working, or it's clogged, or, you know, it's full silt or something like that, then it's exacerbating the, the problems that we have. So, it, knowing what condition everything is in will let us be able to work on those things and maybe knock some things off quickly that would make a, a difference for people right away.
Yep.
We'll start the maintenance program as we did with, uh, the highway and, and road program. So it's not just here it is, it'll be a full comprehensive study, and then where we move forward, budgeted as well on a yearly basis. Um, but the, but that'll, this is the groundwork for it.
It, it'll also help with the prioritizing of the immediate needs versus, you know, what we can work on later on. Much needed. And, and, you know, a lot of our township is old. Or, or, Tony, our development was built in what, fifties, sixties? Forties? Started in the thirties? Yeah, started in the thirties, but. Nineteen fifteen? There was no stormwater back then. So.
Stormwater is forbade.
So, alright, thank you very much, Don, for that update.
Excellent.
More to come on that as it progresses.
Exciting.
Uh, the last item I have, this is, with the new twenty twenty-four, new year, uh, we will be, uh, seeking the board considerations to advertise public meetings for the zoning ordinance update, meeting dates.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Meeting. Board, of course, and where the condition of the county funding that was received. So we just need to, as a condition of the public process and by, uh, publicize the, uh, meeting dates.
Here we go.
Uh, and we're, we're still trying to nail down our, our exact date?
Waiting to hear back, but we're focusing on, uh, one of the Thursdays where we're not sitting, board meeting, one of those.
An extra night for us. And, and by.
Pick one yet.
We can authorize the advertisement for this evening. Um, but by next meeting, we'll be able to announce the date. Okay.
It'll be on the website.
Okay.
Excellent.
Commissioners, any questions on this?
Another Thursday.
I think they're all excited to add one more evening.
One more night.
Woo.
Hey, things calmed down after he came in. It's like we weren't getting together all the time anymore.
You missed it.
I missed everybody. I mean.
Missed hanging out. Somebody's gotta bring us donuts.
And coffee.
My God.
Alright, uh, questions from, uh, residents? Any in Zoom? No? Uh, good. Entertain a motion to authorize, uh, the advertisement for the zoning hearing, uh, meeting dates.
So moved.
Second. Second.
Moved by Commissioner Evans, second by Commissioner, uh, Kennedy. Close third by Commissioner Tindaro. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion's good, five zero.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
You sir.
You, you can't leave yet, though. No, okay.
Oh, no.
Uh, Gilmore and Associates. Ross, how are, how are you doing?
Doing well. Good to see you as well. Good evening, commissioners. So, uh, you may recall that, uh, we did a, a structural assessment and a feasibility study for the replacement of the Spackman Davis Farmhouse roof. And I think you even had some informal discussions about that at one of your previous meetings. And I, uh, from discussions with the township, we know that you wanted to get a little bit of extra information about some of the different material options that we have for the roof replacement. Uh, so where under consideration are, uh, cedar shake shingles, uh, metal standing seam roof, and also, uh, just your typical asphalt architectural shingles. And, uh, so I wanted to start out, I'll, I'll share my screen here. Uh, one thing I also wanted to mention is, we have, uh, with me tonight is Roman Jostrebzki, which is, he's the manager of our structural department. Uh, and I wonder if we might be able to, uh, add Roman as a panelist, just in case any questions come up that of a technical nature that he might need to, to weigh in on.
Looks like he said.
Okay, great. Yep, so then, so also I'll start out here then by sharing my screen. So that should, uh, show at the moment, the, uh, one of the preliminary drawings of the farmhouse that we prepared, and then I will pull up a few, uh, representative photographs of each of the, uh, different roof materials, and then move into just a, a quick table that compares some of the different qualities of each one. Uh, so to begin with, we'll start with the cedar shake shingle examples. I'll just pull this onto the correct screen here. So just running through a few, uh, representative photos of what the cedar shake shingles could look like. You've probably seen, you've probably seen many of these out and about, um, over the years. So some representative photos there. And then moving on to standing seam metal roofs, I think I have five of these. So flip through those. Just zoom in on each one a little bit, so it's a little clearer.
And Ross, uh, the metal uh, roof there, isn't that similar to what we have on the barn now?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, I believe so.
Yep, okay.
And then, uh, finally, we have some different architectural shingles. So I think there is about three examples of those. This is typical. See this a lot on, on residential properties. And then there was also just one little bonus here is that there are also, uh, they're sometimes referred to as fake shake shingles, where they try to give you a bit of the sense of the cedar shake shingles, but they're still an asphalt shingle at the, the lower price point compared to the actual cedar. So that's a representative of that. And then, uh, so those are some photos of the options that we're considering. And then I'll flip over here to this basic table here that compares some of the, the characteristics that we were thinking about. So in terms of costs, the cedar shake and the metal standing seam, they're fairly close in price, and they're more on the higher end of the materials that we are considering. Whereas the architectural shingles are probably on the order of about half of the cost of either cedar shakes or the metal standing seam. Uh, the lifespan, the metal roof is definitely gonna have the longest lifespan of, it's something on the order of thirty to fifty years. Whereas the, both types of shingles are more in the twenty to twenty-five, or possibly up to thirty-year range. Uh, I, this is something, I think we talked about a month ago, was the historical, uh, look, and whether that was kind of time period appropriate, and the cedar shake shingles are definitely period appropriate. Whereas this type of metal roof is not necessarily period appropriate, and, uh, and asphalt shingles definitely are not. There are metal roofs that are historical, but that's typically a corrugated metal roof, which has the fasteners on the outside, and they're a lot more susceptible to damage and leaking over time, much more of a maintenance problem, so we don't really recommend that. So for that reason, we didn't even, uh, list that in our, our, uh, table here. We're really, these were the three primary materials under consideration. And then just another, uh, one other thing is that a few of the roof elements, uh, they have some low slopes, and that would be on the, the smaller roofs over certain entries and doorways on the building. And the, the two different types of shingles are not suitable for a really low slope roof like that. So the metal standing seam roof definitely has that benefit that it's suitable for low slopes. And I, I do anticipate that we would use some metal roofs, uh, pretty much no matter what, and that would be on those low slope areas. Whereas the bulk of the farmhouse, uh, you know, the, the main roofs, that could be whichever material is, is desired, because that has the better slope that could handle any of these options. So, um, so those were kinda some of the general considerations that we wanted to share with you, and, um, that for your discussion, and if you have any questions, with, uh, I guess the ultimate objective that, not that we have to decide it tonight, but that we would like to get your feedback and direction on what materials we would want to, uh, actually propose when we put together any specifications for replacement of the roof.
Do we have any sense of what cost would be?
Yeah.
We do. So, and these, these are just approximate numbers. They're, they're, um, a more of a rough order of magnitude cost, but, uh, the cedar shakes, we're estimating around a hundred forty-two thousand, uh, metal roof, about around a hundred and thirty-seven thousand. So they're, they're pretty comparable. And these costs in, it's not just the roof material, it includes some of, uh, the structural repairs underneath, um, and some improvements to the gutters and drainage systems. So that is adding up to more of a total project cost. And, um, and then the alternate number three for the asphalt shingles is around seventy-seven thousand, so definitely on the order of half of, of the other two options.
Thanks, Ross. The, um, I've had a lot of conversations, uh, with, um, historians and farmers who have, uh, talked about how the cedar shake was a great thing, uh, a hundred, two hundred years ago.
Yeah.
But now the trees are not really mature and big and strong. So it's kind of a waste to spend the money on the cedar. Um, of course, I always look for Abby's and put on these things, cause she's so, she's so involved with Old County Historical Society. And we've talked about this in the Historical Commission. Uh, the main thing is saving the house and the ceilings inside of it, and not having to do this again twenty years from now. So, I mean, my recommendation would be the metal. But I don't know. What, what do you think, Abby?
Yeah, I think that there's a lot of benefits to the metal roof with, with the, the longevity being a major factor. Like, you spend a little bit more upfront, and then you get a really quality product that's gonna last for a long time. So I was kind of, kind of leaning towards that option myself, but, you know, obviously, all of your input is the most important.
And Ross, you're, you're saying even if we do the asphalt shingles, part of the roof is gonna have to be metal anyway, right?
Correct. I, and that, that would be like a very pretty small square footage. They're small roofs over, uh, entryways, uh, just for, just using as an example, um, the porch, I guess that one's not that small, really. But there, there's a pretty low slope on that, so I think, I think we would have some metal roof no matter what. And then the, the main question would be, say, up on the, the main roof of the farmhouse, what material to use for that?
Hey Ross, while you're talking about the porch, let me ask that very uncomfortable question. You've been out there. Did you notice that the porch is pulling away from the, from the actual building? And ripping out the, uh, plaster? I believe that's plaster on there. What is that on the outside, Abby? Right there on top of the stone?
Which is?
On the front, the main porch.
Oh.
Stucco.
That's, yeah, it's stucco. Yeah, it's.
I was just gonna interject, um, that roof that you're talking about is currently metal. So right now, there's like all three roofing types on the building. Also, if you do the metal, it will match the barn.
Right.
Morning.
So Ross, do you, do you think that that, what do you think that would, that porch is gonna need to, to not collapse?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, uh, I'm not totally familiar with the, the structural nature of that. Uh, I could see if Ro, maybe Roman has any feedback on that, but, um, I'm sure that if it were unstable, to the point where we're going to try and build a roof on top of it, yeah, there would have to be some structural repairs done before the roof actually goes down.
Hey Ross? Um, if, if you have a calculator there, this is how I think.
I do.
And if you go back to the breakdown of the cost.
Yeah, sure.
Like, uh, each, each option had the same cost for the repairs needed. So, and then you just had a separate line for what the roof would be, right? Correct?
Sure, yeah.
And it's hard to see from here. But if you can take the asphalt one divided by thirty years, and take the metal one divided by fifty years.
Sure, yeah. So the asphalt for, are you, are you talking about just the, uh, just the asphalt shingle price, Paul, and then not the other repairs? Okay, yes, so that was three.
Yeah, so you're, you're doing apples to apples.
Yeah. So for asphalt shingles, twenty-three thousand six hundred divided by, um, I guess we'll, we'll go with thirty and say we get the best-case scenario there. Uh, so that would be seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars per year. And then the metal roof, seventy thousand eight hundred divided by fifty, uh, one thousand four hundred and sixteen. So, so still, yeah, around double.
The question, though, um, we're still gonna add in, if we're doing the metal roof for everything, it's that number, but if we're doing the asphalt, we still have to add in the cost of the metal roof on those four sections, right?
Yeah, I think we have some, for alternate one, we had secondary roof. I think, uh, that is referring to those smaller roof areas. Uh, so that's already considered as metal. Same alternate two considers it as metal for the secondary roofs. And then our, our asphalt shingle scenario is calling it out as asphalt shingles, where, uh, it's possible that might need to be revised to, to metal roof because of those slope concerns. So that would, that would increase this a, a little bit, yeah, another twelve thousand, actually, if, if that were accurate. Roman, do you, would you recommend, uh, for the secondary roofs under the asphalt shingle scenario, that we actually consider that metal?
I believe metal would be, uh, the standing seam would be the better option, but it will be more expensive than asphalt shingles. Um, in this case, uh, the cedar shake doesn't perform well at low slopes. The asphalt, asphalt shingles do perform better than them, but they're always prone, uh, to degradation in a low slope, um, situation or low slope condition. So, yeah, that would be the, the better option, in my opinion. Um, just wanna interject one thing, that this asphalt shingle, uh, uh, I guess scenario for the, uh, alternate three, would not consider the super high-grade architectural asphalt shingles. These were a good grade, you know, a twenty-year, you know, to thirty-year, or, or what they warranty for twenty, thirty-year, but they were not the, the high-end forty-year plus, you know, shingles with the high profiles and the thicker asphalt. that you would typically get to try to mimic a, a shake. So it really would depend on ultimately what the board would like, the, the appearance uh of the uh Spackman Davis Farmhouse uh to uh, to look like. Uh, and aesthetics and architecture play a role in that. And just, you know, uh, you ta- you take a look at something and you know whether you like it or not, and it's good or not. I think if you did the barn in standing seam, uh, this would be a nice companion to it. Um, and, and definitely standing seam, e- even in uh National Association of Home Builders recognizes that standing seam, uh, metal standing seam roofs are the, the second uh most desirable option when you're talking about long term and maintenance free. Uh, the, the first one is slate, but you can't put slate on that building. Uh, you, you just don't have the infrastructure. The, the roofs, the, you know, the, the roof system, the roof support system there just won't support that kind of weight. Uh, so uh, the next best option for longevity, uh, durability is that um, uh, standing seam metal roof. And I, I'm glad you brought up the corrugated roof as well, Ross. And you did an excellent job, by the way, in your presentation. For not being a, for not a roof expert or a roof guy, you did a great job. So
Appreciate it.
The, the bottom line is that that's bang, I think bang for the buck for, from the township's perspective. Uh, that standing seam metal roof will, will perform well uh for them. Um, uh, and, and I believe the board would happy ultimately with those results.
Yeah, I also like the idea of the consistency between the farmhouse and the barn. I, I think there's some benefits there too.
Yeah, I, I agree. I, I think it would not be too far of a departure from, you know, the historic perspective in terms of um, maybe turn of the century. Uh, it perhaps it doesn't uh ring true to the seventeen, eighteen hundreds um, uh, construction. But typically they were, you know, that was slate and, and wood shake or wood shingle. Um, and again, slate will last for, you know, it's, it's somewhere between a hundred and a hundred and fifty years. Um, uh, of course, you know, depends on environmental conditions, ice, you know, a lot, lot of, lot of things that, that, that would uh cause some premature degradation. But the bottom line is that um, bang for the buck. Again, I think from a value standpoint, that standing seam metal roof is, is the way to go. My humble opinion.
Agreed with that.
Thank you, Roman.
Commissioners, uh, any other thoughts on this? Standing seam? You don't like that?
Why not?
What?
You don't like the standing seam? That's what he was talking about, the metal roof?
Oh, I like the metal. Yes, that's a definite.
Okay. Roof. This is more of a discussion thing, right?
Yes, uh, no, no action items, you know, nothing that would need to be voted on. But uh, I, I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think there was definitely a, a pretty strong preference to go with the metal standing seam when we prepared the specifications. Is that correct?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
And why don't I reach out to the residents here? Cause I see Tony's hand. He's making his way to the mic.
It's always that first step.
Do you have a grant for this? Do you apply for a grant for this?
Uh, yeah.
I'm looking at Don. Yeah, Don's got the answer.
Okay.
Because uh, I mean, there's, can't keep taking from the budget because there's more important things that have to be done.
Like the trails?
Trails. Trails are more.
And you know, I want to, Josh, they're talking about the brick. I was sitting there, thought about it. You, they have the red dye that you could put into the uh concrete and you can make the red brick with the stain. But the only thing, the joints are, will be red too, but, but you'll have your red brick.
Yeah.
So I was, uh, when I was reading the packet, um, and we, we were, I knew this was gonna be a discussion item. And looking for ways if we can't uh ascertain a grant, if you look in um Lisa's um uh, revenue summary for last year, we budgeted to earn sixteen thousand in um, interest earnings. Uh, we actually earned two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars.
Will you do my finances?
So right there, we, we could pay for the roof with last year's interest earnings if we wanted to.
And we can clean it quick.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Tony. Ross, excellent presentation.
Yes. Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Hey, do you, do you have the pictures of the uh, the damage?
Oh, man.
Yeah, when I was taking a look at that, it, it looked a little rough.
Uh, from, would that be something that might have been in our assessment report? We have some photos.
Yes. Yep. Yeah, just keep going there.
Then the inside is where you.
Yeah, I think.
Everyone's aware, if you have the damage that needs to be repaired.
I'm not, I'm not sure if we have uh the particular photo that you're referring to or not. Uh, but I know there's a lot of daylight coming in the very top of the roof there. So that's a, an indicator, but you see there.
I think some of the wood, yeah, there you go.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, there's definitely some dry rotting structural members. Uh, and that's why we put in our cost estimate there, some allocations for structural repairs. Because some of these are definitely gonna have to be replaced. And then there's some other work that you really only find it when you actually go to replace the roof. So there's also an allowance in there for some, you know, unknown, but kind of expected further repairs.
Yeah, look at that. Yep. All right, perfect.
Yeah. Okay. Great. Well, I think, I guess that uh concludes that topic probably. Um, thank you very much for your discussion.
Ross, is that water damage or fire damage? That's water. What do you, what are you saying here?
That picture right there that you have.
Yeah, you have the split beam, but.
It almost looks like fire damage.
Plywood.
Yeah, I, I, I think that.
Kitchen on fire? Kitchen was on fire.
I'm, I'm not sure.
I think so, but it was completely flooded. I know that.
Was that Ross? I'm sorry.
Uh, yeah, I'm not totally sure. Um, I don't know. It get, I, it definitely gives the impression of some water damage, like a sort of a, almost like a leaking across movement, moving down. But uh, yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure what that exact image is. Uh,
Yep.
I, I would think wa- a water damage because of the fact that we don't have that same occurrence on these other members here. But yeah.
Okay.
Great.
It appears to be water because it, it's top down as opposed to um charred, uh, the, the roof rafters would certainly be charred if you had that much damage. Um, so, uh, and, and having been in a situation where we've had to replace water damaged members of the roof structures and the furring strips and the underlayments before, uh, when you get that much water uh, i- over a long period of time and it soaks, it dries, it's the wetting, drying, wetting, drying that does it. That does the most damage uh deterioration wise and also color wise. So you, you'll go from, you know, the normal color of like a light brown wood, uh, light to medium brown wood will eventually get darker and darker and darker until you get to the point where you see what you see there. And, and a lot of those elements, soft, they're very, very soft.
Gentlemen, thank you so much. Appreciate the update on this.
Sure. Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank, thank you. Thank you, everybody. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
And Ross, I think you have more item?
That's correct. Yep, I'll just close down uh these farmhouse related items. And then moving on to the Reed Street project, uh, I wanted to deliver some good news that you, you may have already heard this. But the township did receive the reimburse, the reimbursement through the grant program uh that we uh applied for uh in December. So I believe that the township received a check for over four hundred and thirty thousand dollars coming back in. So that was a very positive thing.
Yes.
And we'll uh, we'll continue to put in uh reimbursement requests. Uh, we typically do a quarterly basis for those. So we'd be, I think our next one would probably go out uh in March. And then there would be yet another one, you know, more at the conclusion of the project. And uh, in the, in the past month, they've, they've been working on a lot of curb installation on uh Reed Street west of Fourteenth. That was kind of the primary work area as well as just some general backfill and cleanup. So those kind of activities were what was going on. And so for an act- actual action item for tonight, um, on your agenda is request for the board's consideration to authorize payment for their um, application for payment number six in the amount of eighty-eight thousand, five hundred and twenty-two dollars and ninety cents. That would be payable to Forsite Concepts for the Reed Street Drainage Improvements Project.
Commissioners, any questions on this? If not, entertain a motion.
That moved.
Moved. Moved by Commissioner Tendaro, second by Commissioner Young. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Motion's good five zero. Thank you so much, Ross.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I think that's it for, for me for tonight. So uh, everyone have a great evening.
You too.
Thank you.
Take care.
Bye bye.
So the agenda ordinance and resolutions for consideration. We have uh, resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero one, adopting the twenty twenty-four schedule of fees for professional consultants. Commissioners, did you have any questions? I know we discussed it at, I think, the last meeting.
I had no question.
Residents, any questions on the fees? None at this time here in the township. None in Zoom. Yeah, entertain a motion to approve.
That moved.
Move by Commissioner Evans, second by Commissioner Tendaro. All in favor? Say aye.
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 The motion's good five zero. Next consideration to approve, resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero two, establishing the annual trash and recycling fee. Any questions on that?
No.
Any questions from residents? Yes, Tony? Oh. By the increase? Was it fifteen dollars? Eight dollars per bill. It was eight and then two dollars for, for silver. So it was a ten dollar per bill. Four dollars a month.
That is.
Does it make sense? Any other questions? Entertain a motion to approve.
That moved.
Moved? Have a second.
Second.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
Okay. Moved by Commissioner Tendaro, second by Commissioner Kennedy. All in favor? Say aye.
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 Motion's good five zero. Minutes to approve. We just have the January second, the board reorg minutes. Any questions, changes? If not, entertain a motion. Moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Young, second by Commissioner Tendaro. All in favor? Say aye.
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 Minutes have been approved. Moving on to financial department. Get out here. Lisa, how are you this evening?
I'm doing great. How are you?
We're, we're awake. We have our coffee.
Yeah, you just made us a couple hundred thousand dollars. So yeah, you are done.
You know, it kind of stole my thunder there. But that's okay. I'm, I'm happy to hand that one over. Uh, we actually did, we, we finished the year out uh very well. We had a ninety-nine point nine percent uh return on all of our tax bills being paid. So, yeah, we're just, uh, the girls did a great job, um, you know, making phone calls and getting everybody to, to pay one way or the other. Uh, trying to push that electronic, get everything in faster. Um, and it's been working. So we're in good standing. Hopefully we can carry that over till next year. Uh, we did have a lot of calls about people looking for their light bill. So I'd just like to remind everybody, no light bill.
No light bill.
Twenty twenty-four, there's no light bill.
All right.
Yay.
And, and the cost for PICO have, have gone down tremendously. So I expect that to continue through the next uh decade or so. So we're, we're in good standing there. Um, I do expect our fund balance to increase, not as much as last year, but probably between three hundred and three hundred and fifty thousand. Um, so, so we'll be in really good standings moving forward with uh all of our projects that we have going on, I'm happy to say. Uh, I did not update the debt service. I just wanted uh to, everybody to look at that. We do have a couple more leases that we're adding um specifically for, I believe, the, the golf course. Um, but all of our other equipment is being purchased outright. So this year we have uh just one more lease for the Raker at the golf course. And I believe we are done, I apologize, one more after that is uh the Peterbilt that we have. So we have two, two payments this year for twenty twenty-four, and then those are all wiped clean. And we're, uh, the last two years, we've been doing a great job just buying everything out, saving on the interest. And so we can earn more interest.
Lisa, I didn't steal your thunder completely, cause you could uh, uh, show what the percentage increase was uh on the interest.
Uh, one thousand four hundred and eighty-three percent.
Yeah.
Yes.
And, and that's just for the general fund. That is not, uh, our, our total uh, over all of our funds excluding CTMA uh comes to about five hundred and twenty thousand. So, uh, tried to make some good investments, put it in some CDs, et cetera, that are allowable by local government and code. So uh, it worked out.
You sure you didn't put it on red and hit big?
And that is all that I have. I do want to mention uh, the next item on the list, there is a typo for the list of checks. Uh, should be five one three eight nine to five one four seven two. My financial report is complete. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Excellent, as always.
You.
You.
Commissioners, any questions on the uh, the check run?
No.
I just have one. Um, check fifty-one four oh five, Fisher and Sons Company soil test results. And it says vehicle maintenance tires. Fifty-one four oh five.
Uh, that's for the golf course.
Okay. But it just says, uh, it was probably just classified wrong. Okay. What, what exactly were we testing? Does it say there?
You know. Through um, soil around the uh lakes.
Okay.
To make sure that they're okay, as well as some of the trees that were rotting.
Okay.
Um, and we have uh another arborist, I believe, coming out. Double check.
Thank you.
Hey, commissioners, uh, if there's no other questions, entertain a motion to approve check run fifty-one three eight nine to fifty-one four seven two.
I moved. Second.
Moved by Commissioner Kennedy, second by Commissioner Tendaro. All in favor? Say aye.
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 Run has been approved. Thank you, Lisa. All right, now we move on to the meat and potatoes. Director's report, please chief. Chief Elias, welcome. Thanks for hanging out this long.
Yeah.
All that, donuts were mentioned numerous times earlier. I, I just, I just want to thank the board for sparing me the cop jokes.
Didn't even think of that one.
What? You've got a little powder.
A little sensitive.
That's where they hang out at, you know. Where they hang out.
Mark, Mark's up here on DoorDash online. Yeah, he's, he's got.
They're on their way.
Uh, I just want to go over a handful of things from the annual report. Service calls up seventeen percent from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three, ten thousand six hundred and sixty-five versus ninety-one hundred. Uh, the prior year, largest increases were in the areas of theft, fraud, drug offenses, and mental health. Two hundred ninety-four responses to the Chesapeake County Intermediate Unit and twenty-eight to the Coatesville Schools. This school year, uh, we're already, uh, we've already responded to the intermediate unit a hundred and seventy-four times. So we're gonna far exceed last year's numbers.
A hundred and seventy-four in January?
Since, no, from September through December. Um, so.
Last quarter.
Yeah, we're two ninety-four. Last year we're on pace to hit about three hundred and fifty or sixty this year. Last year we're on pace to hit about 350 or 60 this year. Good news, serious traffic accidents down 31% in 2023 from 139 in 2022 to 96 in 2023. And I credit that in large part to increased traffic and speed enforcement and filling vacant positions, which led to more proactive police work. Traffic stops doubled in 2023, um, from the prior year, a thousand to a little over 2,000. So I apologize if any of you fell in that 2,000 category. Um, other self, officer self-initiated work, bank checks, park checks, those kinds of things. Also up significantly in 2023, demonstrating 31% year-over-year increase, which again goes hand in hand with adequate staffing. We end at 2023 at full staffing. Uh, this board approved two additional police officer positions for 2024. We filled one of them. Um, we're going to have to test again. We ran out of names on the eligibility list from 2023. The tentative test date is going to be April 14th. Um, and I know I've mentioned that this before, but of all the boards I've worked for in my 11 years here, this by far is most public safety oriented board. Um, so thank you.
Yeah.
Um, lastly.
One thing, chief, that date.
I'm sorry?
The date for the exam?
Uh, April 14th.
That's the day of the Titanic. You might not want to do it that.
Yeah, I don't need to be on a sinking ship. Our year-end overtime numbers, uh, indicate that we were over budget, uh, by $11,500. But that deficit does not include the $33,000 that we received in overtime reimbursement from Coastal School District for special duty police services. That money, I think, Lisa, correct me if I'm wrong, that goes into the, back into the general fund when we get reimbursement for overtime. Yeah, so that does, it's never reflected in that fine item. I know we've talked about overtime before in the budget cycles. It always looks like we go over, but I think we budgeted 65,000 last year and 33,000, that was almost half, was overtime reimbursement from special duty police work. That's all I have, unless any of you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Commissioners?
None, but we thank you again for the amazing job you and your, and your team do.
Thank you. For sure.
So much.
Yep, thank you.
All right. Next, uh, we have, uh, police, uh, or fire, fire department chief Taylor, Patrick.
Howdy.
Good evening.
Welcome to our meeting.
Hard to believe I'm in my third year already. They may or may not move me in next year, but that's okay. But, um, uh, just like the police department, and I'm sure you'll hear with EMS as well, our percentages are up, uh, for, for calls, uh, not a, about 4% over 2022. Uh, and from about a decade ago, we're up around, I can't, it's anywhere from 28 to 32% uh, from a decade ago. So we're just as busy. Training numbers continue to rise. We face more and more different emergencies, uh, obviously more storm related items. Uh, on that topic, I want to thank Director Huggins and his staff greatly for, obviously, the snowstorm or the couple of snows. Uh, I think I saw township municipal truck camped out at the firehouse quite a few times, spreading salt and everything else, so not only the fire trucks and the ambulances could get out safely. So thank you very much. Appreciate it. Uh, as Commissioner Evans mentioned, uh, the Fund Drive, uh, that should be hitting mailboxes here in the next few weeks. Finalizing, uh, with the Fund Drive company. So I know we've received a, uh, overwhelming already number of donations via mail, PayPal, things like that. So thank you so much to our residents, uh, who, who have been graciously donating. Uh, thank you to Ray's staff over the last three weeks. They've been spending a lot of time at the firehouse as we move into that, uh, overnight staffing, getting our bunk room a little bit more up to date. I'm sure he's happy to get his folks back though. Since they're no longer in their building design and leg flooring and everything else, but, um, firehouse is looking great. We're, uh, eager to continue into 2024. Any questions for my report?
Commissioners? Patrick, thank you so much.
The only other thing was, uh, for fire police, we have five or six new.
I sent an email to Jim today.
Okay.
Next Wednesday, I'm good.
Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ray, Ray, you only have one item here. You don't have four or five.
I don't know. I think John's throwing me under the bus for the 2023.
He doesn't want to do his section?
Um, uh, building permits, we were up almost 10% um, from last year. Um, so obviously with all the activity, um, uh, building permits are up. Unfortunately, the downside to that, you know, more population, more construction, so we're, you know, code violations. Unfortunately, sometimes that's a negative, uh, you know, it seems like a negative thing. But, you know, the commissioners, I'm sure you understand, it gives us more time to work with people as well. So even though our activities are, are way up, you know, we had close to 2,000 enforcement activities. A lot of those activities are make, trying to make contact with those residents and working with those residents. So, uh, we had eight new commercial buildings, um, built and occupied in town, uh, during last year and three major renovations. Um, scores of, of minor renovations, but three major renovations. And, you know, obviously all you have to do is ride through the township and see those. Uh, from a residential perspective, uh, we had three, um, residential developments in multiple different phases of development. Uh, Meadows at Hillview, my place in the Willows. Um, at, uh, my place or at the Willows, we have two buildings that are now occupied almost fully. One's a 12 unit, one's a 24 unit building. And my place has their first tenant in the apartment building.
Yes.
Meadows at Hillview is probably 85 to 90% build out. Um, so the winter kind of slowed down any land development, but I would think early spring they'll be trying to wrap up that land development piece as a development. Uh, and we did have Hills at Thorndale Woods, obviously has started, they started, uh, putting the infrastructure in and, uh, clearing land and putting their infrastructure in. From a land development standpoint, we, we had five land development projects that worked through the process or completed. Um, some of them were longstanding projects, uh, and three of them are close. Obviously Jeffries, uh, the farmhouse you seen got approval. And then, uh, the Kia project to, that's getting close. Uh, from an emergency service standpoint, other than what Chief Taylor said, you know, we've been working with, uh, the multi municipal committee for EMS for the area and working with, uh, Mink was as they work through, um, you know, through their, uh, serbs changes. Uh, FEMA. So we're not quite done with FEMA yet. I did just today, uh, get a message and, uh, from FEMA an email, and it was a preliminary, uh, estimate on what they're going to give us on reimbursement. Um, so rough numbers right now, looks about, uh, 612,000 hours. A little disappointing. It's about, uh, 4%, low over 4% of what we paid out. We paid about $2.3 million. Um, so that's not official yet, but that was a rough estimate they gave me today. So we should be seeing a final and hopefully a payout on that soon. Uh, up to full staff, like the chief said, um, you know, we're pretty much at full staff. We hired a one, uh, full-time assistant fire marshal. Um, and then the transition over to the firehouse is just going fantastic. Uh, from a public works perspective, uh, again, I can't say enough, you know, I, I stepped in purely to help, you know, John Huggins and the guys, you know, have to take all the credit for sure. Um, besides all the normal work they do, uh, you know, obviously they did a lot of storm work, uh, stormwater work this year. Lot of infrastructure, uh, maintenance, a couple things to hit on 50 genes if you can. And, you know, they replaced, uh, a stormwater culvert under two, uh, driveway entrances and restored the driveways. And the tenant at that, uh, business owner at that location had nothing but good things to say about him. The way the crews interacted during the day with staff coming in and out there to the, the work that's just operating great. Uh, Hillcrest, they did, uh, some storm, uh, water pipe replacement in that location. Uh, new curbing, the whole nine yards. So it was pretty, you know, pretty impressive. Uh, in Giro Cross and that Beaver Run, you know, we're having an issue there. Uh, we're working on long term, but the guys had to keep that pipe area cleaned on multiple occasions. And then some general activities, a new roof was put on the public works garage, uh, hired a full-time administrative assistant and just participated in, you know, all the outings that the township held.
I gotta say, Johnny, you and your team, you got, you got a lot to be proud of.
All right, first run.
All right, next we have, uh, Mink was Fire Company. Thanks for coming out.
Yes.
Evening.
Hello. Hi.
So as, uh, as everyone's been saying, our numbers did, uh, kind of skyrocket last year, but our whole bias, because we did gain the majority of talent. Um, so from last year, uh, our total call volume went from, uh, 3,867 to 5,476. Well, it's with 2,396 in Allen Township. Of those, 1,001 were ALS, 1,319 were BLS. Top of all types, BLS sick person, 415. ALS heart problems, 297. BLS fall 206, ALS respiratory, 174. Of those, 893 were transported ALS. 854 transported BLS. 246 were received treatment, but were not transported. 70 were treated ALS with a different BLS service and 114 were no services. Receiving hospitals. 1,229 at Chester County, 545 at Pearl, 28 at Children's Hospital, King of Precious, seven to Phoenixville, four to Lancaster General, Porches and the Mortars, one to Pottstown and one to Redding. Um, I think I'll read something we sent out with, uh, year-end report. Says greetings. 2023 was certainly an unprecedented and challenging year for Mink was EMS. Throughout the course, we felt the full effect of the closure of one of our main hospitals, one of our main hospital destinations for our patients, for any one hospital. Before to compound that, Mink CMS also saw spike in call volume, largely in part to the departure of power direct resources at the end of 2022. Two main factors have had a systemic impact on Western Chester County community with a deep community roots. Our staff have stood the test of time. One thing that was not challenging for our department was its commitment to exceptional service downtown and surrounding communities. Visitors. As we have prided ourselves over the last century, we need to thank the residents, elected officials, trust, dedication to our organization, past present.
I, I appreciate the dedication to our residents.
Yes, thank you.
So much. You know, I did have one question. The, uh, what's your turnaround time now? You know, now that we don't have Brandywine Hospital and you, you need to go to Pale, Chester County and whatnot.
So if, so when I started here in the hospital, we're open and it wasn't, it was pre-COVID, our turnaround time. Right? Patched available about an hour.
Yeah.
Now with overcrowding and ERs and such, it could be anywhere from an hour to two. At Chester County for 20 half hours. Simply because they don't have liver. Set a pale or set a.
It, it's a drain on our resources. It truly is, yeah.
In the, in the report for the entire company goes into different municipalities where we sent, where we actually had calls. As far as like. We haven't gone in the lines yet, but we've gone pretty close to it. This is first due.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and, uh, I did get word Nicole was not able to attend this evening, so we do not have an update for the golf course. I know it was covered in snow for a week and I think it just needed a rest. All right, moving on, we have additional business? Uh, I'm sorry? Oh, a- actually, uh, Ray.
Ray gave his report.
Yeah, Johnny's getting his feet wet. He, he needs to see how this works before he gets in, in front of a microphone.
For clarification, I was forced to give.
Johnny's still exhausted from shoveling all the snow. That's what it was. Yeah, I, I wouldn't have left him out if, if Ray didn't step in. The next time. Next time, he'll be ready. All right, additional business? Need this time? Doesn't look like it. Public comment? Any here in the township building? Yeah, when did Tony leave?
Just as the director's report started. He goes with the meat and potatoes.
He, he did.
Yes, he did.
He got the Uber man out there. He got the delivery guy.
Yes.
Well, okay, well, well, let's, let's just say this because he beat us up at the CTMA meeting on Monday. Cause apparently over at Willows, they, they didn't plow their snow or shovel their, their walkway. So I'm saying this for Tony because I knew he was going to come up here and, and rag on you about it. But, uh, yeah, if you can just check that. I don't know what he was. Well, keep an eye on it next time. Any other public comment? Zoom world, no? All right, well, thank you very much, everyone. I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
Uh, second.
Moved in second, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned. Thank you so much. Have a good night.